All right, I hear, I saw the thumb. Thumbs up from the videographer. Welcome, folks. We're going to call our meeting in order. Regular City Council meeting of October 28, 2025. I'll look to the clerk for roll call, please.
Mayor Doring?
Here.
Vice Mayor Deezee?
Here.
Councilmember Barrick?
Here.
Councilmember Spatarato?
Here.
And Summers is absent.
All right, please join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're on to, oh, before I go on to item four, adoption of the agenda, I'd like to take a moment to thank Vice Mayor Deezee for filling in for me last time. I heard from many in the community that you did an outstanding job, and I'm happy that you were able to sit in for me. Thank you so much. All right, now we're on to item four, adoption of the agenda. Mr. Bradley, could you let us know whether there are any changes to the agenda tonight?
Yes, we'll be moving the presentation labeled 8.5 to right after 8.2.
All right.
And Ax City Manager?
And I would also, Mr. Mayor, staff would like to remove item 13.1 from today's agenda. We will review options and seek a different path forward. Thank you.
Okay. Let me just take a moment to note those in my agenda. 13.1. 8.2, excuse me, 8.5 will follow 8.2, is that correct? Mr. Bradley, okay, got that. All right, any other items, any other amendments or changes to note? All right, then I'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda with those changes.
I'll make the motion.
I will second.
All right, all in favor of adopting the agenda with the changes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes unanimously. On to the approval of the minutes. These minutes are from the October 14 meeting. Any changes to note, either by my colleagues or staff? Then I'll look for a motion to adopt the minutes.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to adopt the minutes, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? None, that motion passes unanimously. We're on to item six in our agenda. This is the time for folks to, to bring your comments to the City Council on any matters that are not on the agenda, and you have four minutes. Anyone wishing to speak tonight to your City Council, welcome. Mr. Smithers, welcome, how are you?
Great, I got through six different contractors today, so that was good.
We have candy for you by the door.
Okay. Appreciate it. Mark Smithers, Vallejo Street. I hope that all of you were able to read my public comments that I sent in that were posted on Monday. I'm not going to go through and read them and the whole narrative of it. I guess what I'm here to just express, which I did in my public comments, is kind of a shocking, just sort of wondering what's going on. I mean, the City Council speaks to open government and transparency, and, you know, the city was looking and working with somebody for a very lengthy amount of time, I don't, probably over a year. And, you know, we've, we know that we have issues with, you know, reserves and funding, and we have, you know, a 16-plus million-dollar unfunded pension liability that's growing. And for all of a sudden there to be a pivot, and we walk away from a potential purported sale of six or seven or eight million dollars and some, you know, nice TOT in a good area that would help anchor downtown and, you know, bring some, some more vibrance to the economy of downtown, that we just sort of walk away from it, and here it is two weeks later, and we've heard nothing. It's kind of shocking, I mean, that we, that that's happened. And, and then at the same time, we're pivoting to some other property that's been exhaustively reviewed by the public. And, and again, we, we have, we have no, no understanding for why. And, and I understand you can't disclose what's in your closed sessions, but I certainly think the, the public is, is, it would be out of respect to the community that you would at least let us know how you came upon these decisions to make these, these, these changes so, so drastically and so, so quickly without any, any understanding or discussion with the public, or just what your thinking is. And maybe there's all good reasons, but we have no idea to know. And my analysis suggests that I kind of question the whole thing quite a bit, I mean, just because of how it's going to work. I mean, I, I know how, certainly how developers work on large properties, so, anyway, that's, that's my, my concern, is that we're not really following, you know, transparency and open government, and, and it's like there's a secret society that you don't want to disclose anything to the public, and that's where we're at. We, we don't know. And so then, I guess it's that whole Yoda thing, you know, like, you know, fear leads to ignorance, ignorance, you know, and then you get angry and, you know, mad, and that's kind of how I think a lot of people in public are, because we don't, we don't know what's going on. So we can't even decide if we agree or disagree with your decision. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and thank you for your written comment. I'd also like to note that Mr. Park, Joshua Park, also submitted a, a public comment. I think we are a transparent government, but there are limitations, I'll just leave it at that, there are limitations to what we can say, and there'll be a time for us to say what we need to say. But I do appreciate the point, the point is well taken. All right, any other public comments on matters that are not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll, any report, any reports or comments under this item from any of my colleagues? Okay. All right, we're, we're on to item seven. Reports by staff and City Council, future agenda items, and AB 1234 reports. Ms. interim or Ms. Acting City Manager, I'm going to, I'm going to, let me, let me point, let me go to the city attorney before you, because we had a closed session, let's see, I think it was on October, what, 15th?
Yes.
And we had a couple matters, labor negotiations, city manager evaluation continuation.
Right.
Couple different matters, if you'd like to report out, that would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so on October 15th, as you mentioned, we did have a special closed session. Four items were on the agenda. The first was conference with the labor negotiators regarding negotiations with the St. Helena Employees Association. There was no reportable action from that item. The second was conference with real property negotiators regarding 1480 Main Street and 1572 Railroad Avenue. There was technically no reportable action from that item as well, but as Mr. Smithers noted in his public comment, it has been made public, the, the council did decide not to move forward with the sale of those properties at this time, but will, will engage in a, in a public process to consider its options for those and other properties. The third item was public employee performance evaluation. The, the council completed its annual evaluation process for the city manager at that meeting. And lastly was conference with the, the city attorney as labor negotiator regarding the city manager's agreement, and the council directed the city attorney to prepare amendments to the city manager's contract that will be considered in open session at a future meeting. And that's all I have to report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Now, Mr. Rossett, any reports from the staff?
We have two announcements, I'll let our city clerk start, and then I will finish.
We'd just like to let the community know that we do have one vacancy on the Active Transportation Advisory Committee to the Napa Valley Transportation Authority. And that group meets on the fourth Monday of every other month at 5:30 down in Napa. So you can apply on our website, you can email cityclerk@cityofsthelena.gov for more information as well.
All right, thank you for that announcement.
Yes, Mayor and Councilmembers, I'm glad to report that at City Manager Camilla's request, Chief Hartley has agreed to delay his retirement to June 2026. This is indicative of Chief Hartley's commitment to the community and his department. His dedication to the city and willingness to continue to serve is greatly appreciated.
Indeed, well, that's good news, thank you very much for that news. I just would note that in Calistoga, the, the police chief there had tried to retire for the last four or five years, and he's still there. So now he's the city, now he's interim city manager. No hints, Mr. Hartley. All right, good, good news on that one, appreciate that, great news. All right, anything else from the staff? All right, then we are on to item eight, presentations and public recognitions, we have a, a couple tonight, and I'm going to start with the proclamations. First one is proclamation proclaiming October as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and then right after that, we'll move into proclamation recognizing the 75th anniversary of the Kiwanis Club of St. Helena. All right, and I will do these from the podium, as I traditionally do, and I'll give my comment after I. Can I turn this podium? Let's see, that feels weird to me, I don't know why. Let's see.
It's just right for me.
Yeah. No, because I'm right-handed, and I have to hold this closer, all right.
All right.
Yeah, no, that's right, no worries. All right, as I said, this is a proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2025. Whereas News Domestic Violence and Sexual Abuse Services is commemorating 44 years of service to survivors of domestic violence in Napa County, having opened the first confidential safe house on October 5, 1981, and having begun providing safety to those escaping abuse. Every year since 1989, the United States Congress has proclaimed October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, renewing our country's commitment to standing against domestic violence and meeting the needs of survivors. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is about raising awareness and uplifting the needs, voices, and experiences of survivors. This year's national campaign, titled With Survivors Always, calls for us to explore what it means to be in partnership with survivors towards safety, support, and solidarity. Whereas domestic violence is a public health concern that impacts the well-being and success of individual community members, as well as the community as a whole. Data from the U.S. Center of Disease Control's 2022 National Intimate Partner in Sexual Violence Survey shows that nearly one in three women and one in four men in the U.S. report experiencing severe physical violence from an intimate partner in their lifetime, while nearly half of the U.S. adults have experienced psychological aggression, such as humiliating or controlling behaviors from their partner. Domestic violence can cause severe physical and emotional distress for survivors who are more likely to become suicidal and lose economic opportunities from the abuse. Children who witness abuse are likely to experience abuse themselves and are often used to control other family members, which can have lifelong impacts on their mental health. Aside from the obvious physical and emotional trauma inflicted, domestic violence contributes to over 10% of all intentional violent deaths, not including suicide, and costs America over $8 billion per year. Whereas by observing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we show that our community is committed to supporting survivors and working toward the prevention of domestic violence among future generations. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Paul Jamison Doring, Mayor, on behalf of the City Council of the City of St. Helena, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and encourage all residents of St. Helena to honor domestic violence survivors and those who served them during this month and throughout the year. And invite you to have a couple of comments, I'll give that to you first, and you're welcome to have a couple of comments, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Doring.
You're welcome, thank you for being here.
I'm Tracy Lamb, I'm the Executive Director of News, and I'm proud to be celebrating my 20th year in my position as the Director for News, an organization that serves all of Napa County and all the survivors of domestic violence and sexual abuse. This year's campaign calls on us to stand with survivors always, and to explore what it means to be true partners with survivors in their pursuit of safety, solidarity, and support. And we also recognize that survivors in the LGBTQ+ community, immigrant communities, have faced escalating threats and fears for their safety, whether at work, in school, or when attempting to seek supportive services. We ask that you join us in caring for all survivors, and help us by sending the message that it is safe to seek help and support at News and with our law enforcement partners. Our services are 100% confidential, and all survivors are welcome, and we will not share their information with anyone or any agency without their written informed consent. Our services are all free and voluntary. We have suffered some terrible losses due to domestic violence in our own communities. In honor of those we've lost and all survivors, we will be hosting, well, we did host, a candlelight vigil. I was very proud that it was attended by survivors and, and also some family members of a woman who was murdered in our community as a result of domestic violence. That hit us very close to home at News, because the woman was a cousin of a employee of News that I've worked with for the last 20 years. So she lost a family member, and I was happy to be there to honor her family and others at our candlelight vigil. We appreciate you recognizing this date, and if you or someone you know is in an unsafe relationship, and unsafe can mean a lot of different things, it doesn't necessarily mean that someone's being physically abused, but if someone is in a relationship where they are feeling unsafe and feel like there's power and control, and, and it's affecting their lives and their children's lives, we really ask them to call 255 NEWS. Like we said, all of our services are confidential, and we thank you and the city for your continued support and helping us to recognize Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So thank you. Also, congratulations on your milestone anniversary as a city, thank you.
Thank you very much. Come to the party. No, you can take that, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate your service to the community also. All right. And now we're on to our other proclamation. This is a proclamation recognizing the 75th anniversary of the Kiwanis Club of St. Helena. Whereas Kiwanis International is one of the largest service organizations in the world, with more than 430,000 members of all ages and abilities in more than 80 nations and geographic areas. Whereas the 10,000 clubs raise over $100 million annually for local causes and donate over 18 million hours of community service. And most of those hours are right here in St. Helena. Whereas, in addition to improving the lives of children in St. Helena and in communities around the world, the Kiwanis Club members promote the development of community leaders, positive role models, intercultural understanding and cooperation, and opportunities for fellowship, personal growth, professional development, and community service. Whereas the First Kiwanis Club started its service in Detroit, Michigan, United States in 1915, and the Kiwanis Club of St. Helena was formed in 1950. Whereas the service provided by the Kiwanis Club of St. Helena supports community tree planting, holiday flags on Main Street, the award of scholarships to four to seven graduating high school students each year, and neighborhood cleanup throughout, through service projects, as well as donations to other community organizations. Throughout this continued good work, the Kiwanis Club of St. Helena will continue to have a positive impact on our community and citizens. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Paul Jamison Doring, Mayor of the City of St. Helena, along with my City, St. Helena City Council colleagues, do hereby proclaim this November 5, 2025, as Kiwanis International Day, and hereby call upon all citizens of St. Helena to render support to the members of this, this organization, and to make themselves aware of Kiwanis International, whose members this day are providing meaningful service to our homes, schools, and community. Mr. Beckstrom? Thank you, I'll give this to you, and then invite you to make a few comments.
A few, yes, a few. Mayor, staff, council members, members of the audience, I'm Bob Beckstrom, President of the Kiwanis Club of St. Helena, and happy to be here with several of my colleagues in the club. I'm not prepared to give a long speech by any means, but I did jot down a few of our accomplishments in the 75 years that the club has been here, just a few. I think everybody in this town who lived here through the 1960s at least are aware that the Kiwanis Club put on a variety show called the Kiwanis Capades, and it was quite a remarkable event, and had quite a bit of notoriety, as well as a lot of good, good vibes in the town here. Among the work projects that we've done, and that's kind of what we're all about, we like to roll up our sleeves and do work. We're not so much cigars and cognac and, and big gifts, but we try to. But for the most part, one of the things that you might recognize of things that we've done in town is the welcome sign when you're driving into town from the south. The Kiwanis Club was instrumental in getting that built in the first place, and we've refurbished it a couple of times on occasion. We also did quite a bit of demolition, demolition work on the Rianda House, which has its own wonderful board, it has its own functioning group and its budgets, but we were kind of the, the quiet grunts who got in there ahead of time and knocked out the plaster and the insulation and the lath, and got the place down to studs so that they could build this remarkable senior center that we have in town here. That's the kind of thing Kiwanis does. I could go on, but I do want to just finish with a comment from our recruiting brochure that I think everyone in this room could probably relate to, because we're all St. Helenos, and we love this city, we love this town, we love being here. What we state and believe as a club is that it's one thing to enjoy the charm, scenery, architecture, restaurants, wineries, and heritage of St. Helena, and it's another thing to feel a part of it, and nothing bonds people to their community as much as service. We serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, and thank you for being here. Let me just do the little work here, we'll move on to items 8.5. I'm buying for the city clerk, well. Here we are, okay. As we stated earlier, we're going to skip ahead here to 8.5, and then we'll go back to the other items. This is the St. Helena Historical Society presentation, Miriam Hansen, welcome, how are you?
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Thank you for being here.
I passed around a little two-pager here, how St. Helena was founded and named, and on the back are the articles of incorporation, just a brief summary, and for anyone in the audience who wants one, they're over there on the table. But my reason for being here is to describe how we're going to celebrate the 150th anniversary of the incorporation of St. Helena, which was incorporated on March 24, 1876. And the first kickoff event was an exhibit at the library created by the St. Helena Historical Society about incorporation. So please stop by the library. Upon initiative by Mara Strickler, our librarian, every month, there'll be a different exhibit, and the first one was about incorporation, and the next one will be put up in beginning of November by the Kiwanis Club. And we also have Grace Church coming in December. The Historical Society is planning a talk in January, we're inviting Napa County landmarks to speak about, is my house historic? It's a question that we get all the time. Is it on the Historic Resources Inventory? Is it on the National Register? Does it qualify? So that will be a talk in January. We'll also be opening a new exhibit in January called Destination Napa, Philosophies of Wellness, and it's being moved from Calistoga, and it provides a history of resorts and people coming for their health to Napa Valley. And that'll be opening in January. February, we emphasize our Native American and indigenous, indigenous people, and the Historical Society is going to invite a Wapo speaker, Clint McKay, and we're also going to work with a Wapo representative to install an exhibit at the library. March, there's going to be a big fundraising party at the Native Sons, and the, there'll be an exhibit by the Women's Club at the library. In April, the emphasis is on the beginning, how St. Helena became a town, and Diane Dillon's done a lot of research on early elections and how city government worked, and we're inviting her to speak as part of that. And Rotary Club will have an exhibit at the library. May is a choral concert featuring music, Craig Bond's group is going to be getting, giving concert, and the Presbyterian Church will have an exhibit at the library. And in June, the emphasis is on agriculture, and we'll be talking about wheat, hops, prunes, walnuts, grapes, and probably get involved with the building of the bale mill and its importance to the early settlement. We're also inviting an author from Oregon who talked about the beginnings of agriculture in California, and particularly orchard fruits. July, of course, we're celebrating America's 250th birthday, so we'll be talking quite a bit about that in July, and the Native Sons will have an exhibit at the library. In August, the wine industry is going to be our emphasis, then and now, and the 150th Anniversary Committee will have a program at that time. And September, it'll be a community celebration, cheers to 150 years, and also our Spirits of St. Helena Annual Cemetery Tour will feature members of the First City Council. October, we're having a big parade. We're going to have the McCormick Ranch buggy in the parade, we hope. The Culinary Institute will have an exhibit at the library. And in November, it's the Wine Barrel Tree, and the American Legion will have an exhibit at the library. And in December, it's celebrating 150th and looking forward to the next 150th, and the Methodist Church will have an exhibit at the library. So as you can see, there's lots of things, good things happening, 150 years, we're going to have a lot of fun, so mark your calendars. Thank you.
Thank you for that. You may not know this, but we actually have an expert in our community on the beginnings and all of agricultural history in California, and I'll put you in touch with him. I may be biased in terms of the person I'm thinking of, but no book yet, but probably 40 years of research on the subject and a passion for it, so we'll connect on that, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All right, thank you for all your service to our community. All right. Set that back on. Okay, now back on to our presentations and public recognitions, we're continuing with item 8.3, Active Transportation Plan, presentation by Napa Transportation Authority. Mr. Ban, welcome, how are you?
Doing well, thank you very much. Great to see all of you as well.
This is Patrick Ban from NVTA.
Thank you. So, yes, Patrick Ban with the Napa Valley Transportation Authority, providing a presentation this evening on the Napa Countywide Active Transportation Plan, which we've been working with city staff on for about the past year. Next slide, please, or do I have a clicker? Am I, am I telling you? Okay. So in 2016, NVTA developed, actually, I'll stop, back, back up a little bit for members of the audience and staff who may not be familiar. NVTA, in addition to running the transit systems throughout Napa County, also conducts long-term transportation planning for our local jurisdictions and coordinates funding through regional and state and federal agencies to advance transportation opportunities throughout the valley. And as part of that work, in 2016, we developed and the city adopted a chapter of the countywide pedestrian plan, and then three years later, in 2019, adopted the countywide bicycle plan, all geared towards identifying opportunities and projects and programs to accelerate and make walking and bicycling more accessible, safer for all of the residents in our communities. Those documents are a little bit outdated at this point, and over the last nine or so years, there have also been a number of changes in state law, local policy, and other documents that inform how we're building out what we call our active transportation, our walking and biking network, both in St. Helena and countywide. our walking and biking network, both in Saint Helena and countywide. And so we initiated a countywide active transportation plan effort to bring those two older documents together, update them, and ensure that they're written in a manner that reflects the local priorities of each jurisdiction while ensuring that priority projects maintain their eligibility for funding moving forward. Next slide, please. So we kicked off this effort in the fall of 2024, and throughout the fall/winter of that year, did extensive data collection, including inventories of all of the existing bicycle facilities countywide, as well as all of the existing sidewalks and crosswalks in every community. So we have data GIS layers for all that information, which we're providing to local city staff, so those can be incorporated into future projects and development opportunities. We have also conducted significant community and stakeholder engagement, starting in March of this year, and really in that recommendations development phase right now as we approach plan completion early next year, looking at what are the recommendations for the next 20 years of active transportation, walking and biking in our community. Next slide, please. So the plan does a number of things, including developing what we call a treatment toolkit, which is basically a guiding document, providing context and reference for city staff, but also members of the public, on opportunities to improve walking and biking in local jurisdictions. We've mapped, as I mentioned, all of the existing walking and biking facilities, done extensive community outreach and engagement, and are really moving forward right now on a comprehensive draft plan that we'll have ready early next year. Next slide, please. In addition to kind of countywide level outreach and engagement, we've also focused extensively on the up-valley communities, including Saint Helena, Calistoga. We conducted a Calistoga-specific workshop in April of this year, and have done a number of pop-up events, including at farmers' markets here in Saint Helena and in Calistoga. We were at the Saint Helena Harvest Festival a week or so ago, talking to folks about our draft recommendations, and have had a number of online engagement opportunities as well, including almost 200 people responding to a survey asking about what their priorities are for walking and biking in our local communities. Next slide, please. So the plan is developed really to be customized and adopted by each local jurisdiction. So there will be a chapter dedicated to the city of Saint Helena, looking at those key goals on the right-hand side of that slide, so safety, equity, connectivity. We're also adding a couple of elements that weren't in prior plans, really focusing on maintenance. We have recognized the urgent need to be able to maintain both existing facilities, but also recognizing that anything new that's built has to be maintained in perpetuity. And so wanting to make sure we're developing both strategies and funding strategies to ensure that those existing and future facilities are being maintained, sidewalks are being repaired when necessary, bike facilities are being swept of debris in the fall, things of that sort, in addition to significant data and evaluation. As an example, the city of Napa is conducting some fairly significant street reconfiguration projects, taking four-lane corridors down from two lanes in each direction to one lane in each direction. And we want to understand, on the big-city side with the city of Napa, you know, how does that work? How does that inform decisions that the city of Saint Helena might want to make in terms of how streets are reconfigured, whether that's adding a bike lane and potentially removing some parking, or adding traffic calming, and how does that impact people potentially taking alternative routes during the morning and evening commute hours? So data and evaluation is a really central component of this document. And we'll have an individualized chapter for the city of Saint Helena to adopt and integrate into your existing general plan and circulation element. Next slide, please. So in developing recommendations for the city of Saint Helena specifically, but also countywide, we've looked at what are our prior local and regional planning efforts, like our general plan, like the Streets Master Plan that the city's been working on, as well as regional and state-level documents say about active transportation, walking and biking? What do we have existing on the ground right now? What is the community interest? Are people primarily walking and biking for recreation, or is it a mix of recreation and commute trips, or just going down to the coffee shop to meet with a friend? You know, what are those types of trips? And also, where are the corridors that are more comfortable or less comfortable to walk or bike on, and where might that demand a change in the types of facilities that are provided? You know, riding a bike on Main Street through downtown is very different than taking one of the side streets that also goes north-south. We looked at origin/destination analysis, and then had extensive review by city of Saint Helena staff on both the planning and public work side to ensure that the draft recommendations that we've shared with the public thus far really reflect the city's local priorities. Next slide, please. In addition to the bike side, which I think is pretty self-explanatory, we also want to really look at the pedestrian network, and where are there opportunities to close gaps that may present a barrier, whether it's kids walking to schools, seniors walking to Rianda House, or other destinations in town? So we collected all that information, as I mentioned earlier, on where are existing sidewalks and crosswalks, and then identified key destinations in each community, including transit stops, schools, parks, retail, medical, other locations, and identified how can we prioritize the limited resource that we may have for active transportation to closing gaps in the pedestrian network near those locations so they can serve the people who really need them the most. We also recognize that not every street, not every community wants sidewalks on both sides of their streets, so recognizing that local interest there, and also identifying that we want to prioritize being economical with these kinds of investments. So prioritizing completing one side of a corridor first, as opposed to trying to do both sides of a street where that may have negative impacts, both in terms of cost, but also in terms of impact on parking and other local resident issues. Next slide, please. So I don't expect you guys to dig deep into these slides, but I wanted to provide them just as a high level to identify, on the bicycle side of things, in the 2019 countywide bicycle plan, we had identified a total of 590 miles of both existing and proposed facilities. In this plan, we're identifying just a little bit more than that, 596. That's not to say that this planning effort is without purpose, but rather identifying that there's a significant change in the types of facilities that are being recommended. We recognize that Napa County as a whole is really a recreational cycling destination, so the vast majority of those miles you'll see are in that Napa County column in the rural hills to the east and west, whereas for the city of Saint Helena, we have a relatively modest number that's going up slightly, recognizing also that we want to make sure we're providing that connectivity between destinations and places where people want to get to. Next slide, please. I will skip this, it's a little bit in the weeds, but I'm happy to circle back if staff or council have questions. Next slide. So we also wanted to develop countywide policies, recognizing this is a countywide plan that is being tailored to each local jurisdiction. We want to have a set of baseline policies that all of our communities can agree to in terms of how we're developing active transportation infrastructure, how we're prioritizing safe routes to schools programs, how we're incorporating changes in the way that we're building out these facilities, whether that's lighting in the evenings in key areas in the downtown core, or along key active transportation corridors, so that people who may be walking or biking late at night after work, for example, have the visibility that they need so that they're being able to do so safely. So really bringing all of the kind of countywide priorities together into a single document. Next slide. And just a couple examples, recognizing that bike parking can be a challenge, ensuring that you have a safe place to lock up your bike, whether it's for a short trip to a coffee shop, or long-term, if you're working at a retail location where you need to have long-term bike parking for the whole day. Next slide. We also want to make sure that we're investing in safe routes to schools, ensuring that kids can walk or bike to their schools safely. That is a concern throughout the county, but something we've certainly heard in the community feedback thus far for Saint Helena. Next slide. As I mentioned, pedestrian-scale lighting. So this is recommending that we identify opportunities to add lighting, particularly on those key corridors, whether it's a Main Street or other destinations that have active transportation infrastructure on them. That's not to say that the whole vine trail from Saint Helena to Calistoga will be lit like the daylight sun, but quite the contrary, that only where there are those key potential conflict zones, those intersections, that may be a challenge for safety or connectivity for people who are walking or biking during those evening hours, and it being almost winter, you know, we're seeing the sun setting pretty early, and there's still folks out there being active and wanting to get to those destinations safely. Next slide. Construction detours is another area of this policy document that we focused a lot of energy on. So when there are new projects, new construction projects, whether that's Caltrans is doing work on Highway 29, or you have a local project that's constructing housing or retail, and their impacts to the local roadway, ensuring that there are alternative routes for people to walk or bike around those construction areas, so again, people aren't forced to walk in the street with traffic. Next slide. So a lot of things that I've touched on kind of briefly here, but I'm again more than happy to answer any questions that folks might have. A couple of next steps and key deadlines. We have online interactive maps available for the community right now through Friday, October 31st, so this Friday. Nothing like a little bit of urgency, hopefully, to get folks engaged in commenting on these documents. We expect to have a draft plan that'll go to the Napa Valley Transportation Authority Board in January or February, followed by coming back to your city council sometime in March or April. And next slide, please. So if you either go to thenapaatplan.org website, or scan that little QR code if you've got a smartphone, that will take you to the plan website that has a lot of additional information. It also has opportunities to provide comments. You can go to an interactive map and drop a little pin to say, hey, this is a location that I find some challenges in, or this is a great location, I really like what was done here. All that kind of feedback, good or bad, is really valuable for our team as we're looking at finalizing those recommendations and then bringing them back to this council early next year. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you for that. I also wanted to acknowledge that we received some public comment from Mr. Warner, a couple comments. Mr. Warner, if you can keep your comments very brief, because we like to move along, and then I'll open it up, maybe some others have some issues. Your questions are a little bit more in nuance, and I'm not sure if Mr. Bannon will be able to answer them, that would be something to send back with him. Thank you.
I'm Chris Warner, and I'm not going to address the substance of my comments. I'm going to try to keep them very, very limited to one issue. And in particular, I want to just mention, I'm representing myself personally, I think NVTA is a very efficient, successful agency. They do a great job on transportation planning. I think they also are one of the most successful seekers and acquirers of funding that benefit all of us in terms of the county. So I don't want to in any way cast aspersion to that. My only comment relates to something we've already heard in the past, and that's the Climate Action Plan that's pending before the county. I was very surprised to see that NVTA was listed as a partner and supporter of over 30 of the draft measures in that Climate Action Plan. And my only question was, where do I find where NVTA has officially approved those measures, among which there are some mandatory travel restriction measures, there are mandatory ordinances, there's reductions in vehicle miles traveled? As you know, we're not only a great city to live in, but we're also a destination city. So any proposals that would restrict travel up-valley into Saint Helena, I think causes us to want to take a closer look. But my only question is the right-hand, left-hand issue here, which is where and when did the NVTA support and approve these particular measures? Whether at the staff level or at the board level, I looked through NVTA's website, I could find no indication that these measures that are, NVTA has listed as a sponsor, have been approved by NVTA. So that's my only plea, is that maybe there can be a right-hand, left-hand clarification. Now, if there has been formal approval by NVTA, that would be another item. I'd love to see where that is. Those are my comments. Really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Warner. Any brief comment with respect to that? Raises a good question. I have the same question.
Absolutely. It is a very valid question, and thank you for asking it, and thank you for the praise of the work that NVTA does. So the Climate Action Committee is a joint powers authority that includes all of our local jurisdictions countywide. It does not include NVTA, but we have been working closely with county staff, as well as staff from local jurisdictions, on the Regional Climate Action Adaptation Plan, which is currently now in a draft documents stage. And although there are a number of recommendations and actions that identify NVTA as a partner, we are not a party to that document per se. And so what I can say is that we are working closely with county staff on that document, and certainly we will incorporate a number of the recommendations from that document into our work moving forward. I can't speak to whether or not that document will go to the NVTA Board for any kind of formal adoption, but that is certainly something that I can coordinate with council and city staff on if they so choose.
All right. Thank you for that. I don't know if you, you all may know that Vice Mayor Deasy and I serve on the NVTA Board, and I was wondering if you had any questions, or are you satisfied for now? Something, I know we're, I can tell you this, that we're going to be exploring some governance issues, some scope of mission and purpose issues at NVTA in the next few months. And I've already actually raised the question of where, by the way, it's not an actual formal JPA, the client, but it, that may be one alternative. We're looking at different alternatives, and there may be an opportunity to incorporate some of this work into the work of NVTA, but that's something to, that's a policy decision that is not ready for primetime at this point. But you raised some really good questions, Mr. Warner, and I think we'll get the answers to those. I know Vice Mayor Deasy and I will raise those questions at NVTA. Anything else, Mr. Deasy? Sure.
Thank you for being here. It's a great to look at. I, if you, can you go back to the Napa County Bicycle Network slide? Can we go back to that? Can you help us understand, if I read it correctly, in 2019, we had 2.5 miles of bicycle paths of some sort? Okay. And there was 25 miles proposed, but it looks like we didn't quite get there, which is the same for most cities. So what can we do to, this time around, make it happen? Is it partnerships with the city or other entity, nonprofits? What would make us successful in actually getting more bicycle routes?
I want to be very careful not to speak for staff. And I would also want to caution that every community needs to decide, you know, how they're going to invest resources on, you know, at a local level. That being said, I think that there are a number of changes that we've incorporated into recommended miles that will allow for accelerated implementation. One of those is the expansion of what we call Class III Bike Boulevards, which are basically corridors that have been identified where bicyclists will share the street with vehicle users. But to make it more comfortable for bicycles, and also to reduce the potential for collisions or other safety concerns, traffic calming will likely be implemented. And so that can include things like curb extensions or bulbous, which I know the city has explored on a couple of projects already. Speed cushions are another treatment that I know have had some conversation locally as well. But I think that's one opportunity to have relatively low-cost projects that are implemented relatively quickly, that have a fairly limited, if any, negative impact on on-street parking as compared to Class II bike lanes, which I think used to be kind of the default approach, which, for better or worse, require quite a bit of room on the roadway, a lot of right-of-way, and which do negatively impact parking in many cases. So what we call quick-build projects are another strategy, which is to, instead of spending, you know, hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars on a lot of concrete work and kind of permanent infrastructure that can be, you know, hard if not impossible to change down the road, prioritizing what we call kind of paint and plastic. So painted markings on the ground as well as plastic in the terms of, you know, bollards or curbs, or other treatments that can be fairly quickly and inexpensively bolted on to the existing pavement. And then if that approach does not work, that can be pulled out fairly inexpensively. Or if there are dollars identified to make those permanent improvements, those can be then be done at a later date. So just two options there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Mr. Bannon was the Executive Director of the Napa County Bicycle Coalition, so he knows what he speaks. So thank you for that. Any other questions for my colleagues? Mr. Summers?
In regards to reducing traffic issues, collisions, et cetera, I mean, there's, I believe at, is it the corner of Main and Pratt extending north to Barringer, it seems that we've increased traffic issues and collisions. Is there anything that's being done about that situation over there where, you know, the road goes into the sidewalk, and then it's, you know, it's been, the lane's been expanded, so it's a problem turning left into Barringer there, and we get stack up. Also, the house that's right there, you know, they've had issues with, just the driveway they have right there has really become, you know, a mess, and it's hard when someone's coming. know, a mess. And it's hard when someone's coming across that bridge to see them. I mean, it's a really bad pinch point there. And is that being addressed, or has it been, have you guys, are you aware of that?
So, that particular location is not something that I'm specifically aware of. What I can say is that this plan and this document generally apply to reducing collisions and fatalities with bicyclists and pedestrians. And that there certainly is a sensitivity and awareness of the potential for improvement.
Well, yeah, it's, I mean...
Improvements in the bicycle and pedestrian space to have kind of knock-on effects on vehicle volumes and throughput on corridors. But I think that going back to Councilmember Deasy, and the comments that I provided to her, is that that's also a kind of context where there's a lot of local discretion. Now, with Highway 29, that's obviously a Caltrans facility, so that's a whole separate ball of wax, if you will. But certainly, the appropriate type of treatment, whether it's a bike lane or a widened sidewalk, is going to be very context and locally specific, in terms of what exactly is, is being put on the ground. And so, again, I can't speak to that particular location, but I'm more than happy to coordinate with public work staff and identify if there are appropriate treatments in the active transportation space that we want to identify and call out for that location in this plan.
Cool. Thank you. And the other question I have is in regards to lighting. Is everything above ground? Are you doing in-ground lighting, or what's sort of the menu of, you know, lighting that you're...
So, I'll answer that in two ways. One is that in this plan, we primarily identify what we call pedestrian-scale lighting, which is generally thought of as, as lighting that is provided at the human scale, as opposed to large overhead streetlights that you would see on a freeway in LA, for example. So, again, context-specific. In terms of in-ground lighting, that is not something that we're identifying in our treatment toolkit as a kind of preferred approach. Generally speaking, that tends to be a much more expensive way to provide lighting. And when we're looking at the intersection between active transportation users, walkers and bikers, and vehicles, what we want to do is be able to provide illumination and identification of those active transportation users to other roadway users, i.e. vehicles. And that generally will require some kind of overhead lighting. We also recognize and have materials in our treatment toolkit and our policy to recognize those communities that do have dark-skies ordinances or other, you know, city guidance that speaks to limiting the amount of upward-facing lighting that can impact the night sky.
Okay. And my third and final question. Now, you're focused on walking and cycling, right? But are you including or discluding, you know, rollerbladers, roller skaters, and skateboarders? And is it, you know, skate-friendly?
Yeah. So I should have clarified at the beginning. When we say active transportation, it is a big bucket, and it includes walking, biking, scooters, wheelchairs, you know, you know, speed skates, inline skates. You know, if, if it is a mobility device of some kind that somebody is using that is outside of a vehicle, that is generally classified as some kind of active transportation. So, you know, we could create a laundry list of 30 or 40 different types of items. I generally refer to walking and biking because it's kind of an easy-to-understand catch-all. But definitely, we do include any kind of active transportation user, including skateboards, including one-wheels, electric scooters, those types of devices.
Awesome. Thank you. Thanks so much for your time.
Excellent questions raised by Mr. Summers. The Pratt Main Street concern is a legitimate concern that we all probably need to focus more time on. Excellent for Mr. Summers to raise that. It's a lot of probably close calls there, but it is, I think folks are getting used to it, but I don't, I'm not sure what the solutions are, but we should focus on that. So, all right. I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead. Councilmember Sprata wrote up. Sorry.
No, thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. I, I guess my question has to do more along the lines of funding. So I noticed that, like, step eight of nine of the tasks was finding funding. And I would, I would hope that before we even start putting time and effort into something like this, which I agree is something that is wonderful to have, but prior to doing that, I would hope that we would have an idea of how much funding we're going to be getting, and where we're going to be getting it from. You know, specifically, our town is focused right now, we need to be using the money that we have on, on certain things like our water. So I'm just wondering where, do we have an idea where this funding is coming from? Do we know how much is going to be allocated to each kind of city, that kind of thing?
Yeah. So, the, the plan does not call for or demand any, you know, particular expenditures by local jurisdictions. What we have done is identified kind of a vision document of what does the ideal active transportation network look like. Within that set of, for the city of St. Helena, about 27, 30 miles of bike facilities, and then we have another set of documents that identify the pedestrian facilities and improvements, we are identifying a constrained project list, that kind of, what can realistically be built out in the next five to seven years, list of projects. And that document will be based largely on historic expenditures by our local communities as a whole, countywide. What have we spent on active transportation, walking, biking, scooters, et cetera, over the last 10 years? And then projecting that number forward with some inflation factor. And so that will be what we call a constrained project list. Basically, our, what are our priorities for active transportation in the near term? The, the funding plan component, which you identified, is really geared towards identifying what existing local, regional, state, federal grants, or other programs may exist that NVTA can assist local jurisdictions in securing funding from. So those could be anything from the state has an active transportation program, which is funded with, I think in the ballpark of $400 million a year statewide. It's not a lot of money, 400 million for the whole state. And it's a very complicated, very challenging grant application to put together. It can be run in the many hundreds of pages. Whereas, we also have more locally discretionary funding in the form of what we call TDA III, which is a program that's funded through a portion of the state sales tax. And NVTA does a call for projects every couple of years to identify from local jurisdictions what active transportation projects specifically a community may want to build out. And so, that's a much smaller pot, but those are local discretionary dollars that we have a lot more control over. So we're identifying what is that whole universe of potential funding, and then what are we potentially most well-positioned to apply for, so that we can pull down all the dollars that we can as a community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. All right. Do you want to add to that, Mr. Jensen?
Yes, I would.
Briefly?
Very briefly. Assistant Director of Public Works. Plans such as the Active Transportation Plan become the menu from which the city can nominate projects for state and federal funding. So it is actually a critical first step to identifying what funding we can use in the future. Thank you.
That's a very insightful comment. You got to get it in the plan. That's what I've learned in, at NVTA over many, many years. Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Have a good night. All right.
Before I move on to your presentation, I wanted to give a moment to welcome the Girls from Scouting America, the family of the people who raised this day quietly come in and join us.
Whoops, get that back on. Sorry, my mic was off for there. Yep, sorry about that. Welcome to our meeting. As I understand it, the, the girls are working on a citizenship in the community merit badge, and that will be coming due in December. They have prepared for this meeting by looking at the agenda, maybe even interviewing a staff member, or maybe that's to come. But we are delighted to have you here. At some point, the, the girls will have to put in eight hours of community service, and they potentially will be looking for some project that will help the city. And so, I would be remiss if I did not welcome you here. I know they had to come in around 6:35 because they have other activities. And I understand they'll be leaving a little early, and of course, that would be fine. Any, any very brief comment from the scout leaders, or not? That's fine if there's not, but, yeah, you're not on our agenda officially, but come to the podium and take one minute. I'll, I'll put you under staff reports.
The troop is only a year old. The girls, this is the same as Boy Scouts of America was. And so these girls will have an opportunity to work toward Eagle, the Eagle Rankin scouting. They've been at it, most of them have been at it about 12, 13 months. We have a couple brand-new ones who are very aggressive. But they will be talking to various functions within the city, like the fire department, police department, so on, and be interviewing some people. And they, they have to do the eight hours, and will be looking for suggestions of things that they can do, and things that will increase their knowledge and understanding of what goes on in the city.
All right. Thank you for that, and thank you for being here. I understand you'll be leaving around 7:30, 7:45, and that, that's perfectly fine. Note that there's a little basket over there as you're walking out, so, good night to come. All right. Okay, we'll move on. We don't have any other items, I don't believe, under staff briefing, so we're moving on to our consent calendar. Oh, gosh. Mr. Hardy, why didn't you stand up? I knew that threw me off a little bit. Perfect, I'm sorry about that, Mr. Hardy. Welcome.
Thank you. For the members of council, first, since it's the first time I've presented on this subject to this council, just a few words of background, so that you know what I've been up to. I've been actively engaged with the county's groundwater sustainability planning process since I was appointed to the Groundwater Sustainability Plan Advisory Committee. That was a series of 18 meetings mandated by the state legislation with the task of creating the plan that was eventually submitted to the state for approval. And that work overlapped with my election to the city council in 2020. So I started on the advisory committee before I was elected, and then continued somewhat afterwards. Since then, I've been attending all of the GSA, or Groundwater Sustainability Agency, meetings, which it generally shows up on the board's agenda once a quarter, as well as all of the meetings since it was formed, of what we often call the TAG, which is a technical advisory group that is responsible for working with the consultants on the implementation plans. So, that's something I'm doing, meeting by meeting, year-round, and have been now for some number of years. So, tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about the most recent presentation to the Groundwater Sustainability Agency, which is just the Board of Supervisors with a, a change in hats. This was from September's meeting, and just another introductory bit. There are two regulatory processes going on right now. One is the Groundwater Sustainability Plan Process, which is effectively a local agency process. And the other is a state water board-initiated supply and demand assessment. And that's being done by consultants reporting to the State Water Resources Control Board. Their work involves looking at all of the major reservoirs in this watershed, and analyzing supply and demand with the stated goal of making recommendations as to what kind of restrictions, if any, would be warranted in the event of some kind of emergency condition, basically drought conditions. So, just as the state imposed restrictions on deliveries through the state water plan to the city of Napa, for example, and many other public and private agencies that receive state water during the last drought, under emergency authority, they're considering doing the same thing for local reservoirs in select watersheds. And for better or worse, Napa's one of five watersheds selected as a kind of pilot program, looking at conditions in coastal watersheds. So, I have access to information about that, because the Technical Advisory Group is engaged with the State Water Resources Board and the consultants. And periodically, reports are made by the state staff and consultants to the Technical Advisory Group. Now, going on more specifically to the subject of the most recent presentation, and I've just picked four slides total to highlight the things that are, I believe are most relevant to the city of St. Helena. The consultants are analyzing various approaches to groundwater recharge. And I've heard that come up as a subject of some interest here in the city of St. Helena. And no conclusions have been reached. You can see the types of recharge they're talking about. One is, you know, diverting water from a river or stream and storing it for irrigation use. So that's basically reducing demand on groundwater. That's scenario two. Scenario one is diverting water to some kind of storage basin where it would recharge into the ground. And scenario three is essentially a focused version of scenario one, in which you're diverting water to a location that's been selected for direct benefit to groundwater-dependent ecosystems and the like. Everything that I have learned over the years about opportunities for groundwater recharge suggests to me very strongly that because of the topography locally and the very high land costs, we have to pursue a kind of, what I would call an adventitious approach, just, you know, opportunistic. Our best opportunities are likely to be small, and it's going to be the aggregate effect of finding a lot of modest opportunities that could make a difference here. We don't, we don't have the conditions for big recharge projects, for a whole variety of reasons. Next slide, please. There has been some new development with the modeling done by the county's consultants. And, and I want to add here that when these presentations are made, if I'm not sure I understand everything that, on the technical side, that could be relevant to concerns here in town, then I request and have to-date always received a private meeting with the engineers at Ludorf and Skelmanini, just to make sure that I'm following the technical side of this. But demand reduction scenarios, what this slide outlines is how they have developed a new function in the model to analyze the effect of reducing groundwater pumping in specific zones. One is within 500 feet of a significant stream. Other is an expanded zone to within 1,500 feet of a significant stream. And then they can look at the whole basin as well. And one of the things that shows up when you just do some simple arithmetic with the numbers, that, that comes out of that slide, about 36% of the total irrigated acreage in the basin is within 500 feet of a significant stream. And about 80% is within 1,500 feet of a significant stream. So, these are zones that are close enough to streams to merit some attention, but they also take up a lot of the space in the basin. And we can go to the next slide, please. So here, you see, kind of big-picture data that is significant. The base period total pumping from 2005 to 2014 was, on average, 15,000 acre-feet per year. Now, that's across the entire basin. The base period is a period defined in the state legislation, and that's your reference point for all of the things that you do in the plan. And, and this period was selected in part because it was a relatively non-extreme period in terms of drought and such. The more recent period, 2015 to 2024... The more recent period, 2015 to 2024, we went through a big drought. And you can see that in a landscape where irrigation and irrigated crops are very important, the effect of the drought is to increase demand. And so, demand for that period averaged 17,700 acre-feet per year. The sustainability goal line doesn't read very well, but that's a goal. It's incorporated into the plan of a 10% reduction in total pumping, and that's 10% reduction from the base period. So the goal is to get total pumping down to 13,500 acre-feet per year. I wanted to show you this slide because St. Helena's situation, as a municipal well-owner and a pumper, is fundamentally different from being a well-owner irrigating vineyard. But there are some similarities for different reasons. So we don't experience an increase in demand during water emergency conditions. We impose restrictions, and the community has been, on the whole, very responsive. And so, actual demand in the city of St. Helena went down dramatically under our Phase Two water emergency program. But because we have three sources, and one of them is Bell Canyon, in which we maintain a reserve for fire protection, and because Bell Canyon is the source most directly impacted by the drought itself, what happens is we're more dependent than, under water emergency conditions, on the water we buy from the city of Napa and the wells. So even though our total demand is going down, the demand on the wells does go up, at least historically speaking. So we are also potentially challenged by meeting the sustainability goal during a drought period. And the last slide, please. This graph's the results, the model produced, when it reduced pumping by 10%. And you see at the top the existing situation. The brown bar represents the number of years when the threshold that triggers the need to do something is exceeded. Green represents years when the relationship between pumping and the goal is good. One slide over, you see what happens if there's a 10% reduction within 500 feet of the river. And that's within 500 feet of all the significant streams in that higher bar. And there, there are very few years in which we exceed the threshold. But when you reduce by 10% all the pumping within 1,500 feet of the streams, now every year is meeting the plan goal in terms of not exceeding the threshold. The other thing that is significant here and worth noting, and this is just typed out in the text, there's a difference between what happens at Pope Street and what happens at Oak Knoll. And I think Pope Street is the upper bar graph, and Oak Knoll is the lower one. The 10% reduction accomplishes a lot more here at Pope Street in the river than it does down at Oak Knoll. I could probably work out an explanation if you challenged me, but I'm just looking at the take-home as being a 10% reduction in our use really does accomplish something. And then finally, it's my understanding, and I have checked the reports going to the council, just to make sure I knew what I was talking about, we're seeing a significant reduction in demand currently from that base period. So our overall demand has dropped and has not gone to the levels, in fact, projected in the last water rate study, which is not a good thing for rates. But there you have it. What's good from a conservation perspective and from an environmental perspective does have very real costs in a municipal water system. But the reason I bring it up here is that it appears, at least if current trends continue, that the city should have no great difficulty meeting the 10% goal set out in the plan, which we can see if met across a larger area. The impact of the wells in the city of St. Helena doesn't really tip the scale anywhere here. But if, in aggregate, all the users, on average, reduce by 10%, then we see a significant benefit to the Napa River. And finally, in that regard, I'm also very much aware that just as the wells are a kind of backup to Bell Canyon in a water emergency, they're also a backup when the treatment plant is shut down for repairs or other things are going on. And they're also relied on more heavily when we have issues with the pumping stations that deliver that water from the city of Napa. So meeting the goals that we might have for the wells or well use is, like everything else in that water system, dependent on an ongoing and successful program of maintenance and improvement. That's the report. Happy to answer any questions. With your encouragement, I'm happy to continue this work. I think it's of great interest to me, but I also think it's very important for the city's decision-makers to have the longer view in mind. These initiatives, both the state initiative with the supply and demand assessment and the groundwater sustainability plan, are going to lead to increased regulation of the city's water system.
All right, Mr. Hardy, thank you for that. Yes, we highly encourage you to stick it out. The amount of information and expertise that you imparted and expertise that you have been developing over the years is just extraordinary. It's a real blessing and benefit to our community, so I, for one, will encourage you to stay. I'm not sure. I assume that this slideshow could be made available to all of the council members if it's not already online. That would be great for me. I want to dive into it a little bit more.
I delivered the complete PowerPoint
Okay.
from that GSA meeting to Andrew this afternoon.
All right.
So the city has it.
All right.
You got four pages out of 60-some. But yes, it's available to you.
And I guess one que-- there may be other questions, but one question I had in mind when you were referring to the St. Helena obligation, and we're, you know, that's our jurisdiction, obviously. This is going to be, the whole region is going to have to make these reductions likely. But when you talked about the 10% reduction, were you referred specifically to the St. Helena's domestic wells in particular, or all wells within the jurisdiction of St. Helena?
Well, the way the plan is written, the goal is to achieve a 10% reduction overall. And on paper, it doesn't matter whether some people are reducing 50% and some one. If the average is 10, then the plan is implemented. Implementation is successful. From my own perspective, and I think this is particularly relevant to any prospective question with respect to how the city meets its obligations under the public trust doctrine, the prudent thing to do is to target the 10% reduction here and, you know, have an answer to the question.
All right.
What are you doing?
Questions or comments from my colleagues? Mr. Barrett?
Mr. Hardy, thank you for your work. Can you, and I know you can't give any definitive, but can you help us understand with these, are they guidelines for now? And when do you think they will, from a future perspective, turn into a regulation where we will have to, right? So there seems to be some choices here that we might or might not decide to do, or perhaps somewhere in between. Can you expand on that?
Sure. I'd be happy to. The SIGMA, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, has a 20-year horizon. So it gives a mandate to each basin that is identified as a critical basin needing a groundwater sustainability plan, and whichever agency ends up responsible for that. In our case, it's Napa County stood up to the plate. They're the responsible agency. They have to submit the plan. 20 years is the period you have within which to demonstrate that you have successfully met all of the mandated and approved goals, okay? But it's a thoughtfully constructed act, so there's a review, a progress report, if you will, due every five years. And the first progress report from Napa County, I believe, is due next year. And so, at that point, the state is looking to see, what have you done? Are you making progress? How much more do you have to do to dot all the i's, cross all the t's, generate all the data, and actually implement a concrete program that achieves the goals? It's hard to know exactly where the rubber's going to hit the road on the hard parts of all this. They're coming. I think there are going to be some very tough discussions in the next two to three years about where the environmental flows framework fits in. This is a rather vaguely named, from my perspective, a term that covers, how much water do we need to leave in the river for the fish? I mean, that's really what that's about. And that will then have a big effect on how much of a reduction in pumping is really necessary to meet all of the goals. And we don't have those numbers yet. But I think, and there's also going to be some attempt at negotiating amongst the water users, because SIGMA is subject to the Article 10, Section 2 of the state constitution, which says that all use must be reasonable and beneficial. And courts have ruled that applies to environmental use. So there's going to be some tension there because the environmental stakeholders, for the most part, think that the fish should get whatever they need regardless of what anyone else wants or needs. And that's not really what the constitution says. I don't think that's exactly how it will play out. But I think we begin to see what the hard parts of implementation look like when the environmental flow framework analysis is complete, and we're starting to get reports on what it means in terms of demand. So I would say the point at which we're talking about whether voluntary compliance is working or not is probably another five, six years out. And that's why I do what I do and come back and report, because I know all too well that that's too far out for most people to think about it very much.
Indeed.
The issues of the day take up a lot of bandwidth. So there you have it.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Appreciate your time. Have a good night. Happy Halloween. All right, take care.
May I interrupt just a second, please?
Of course.
Mr. Hardy, I'd like to give your contact information.
Well, I want, are you, do you need to go to the mic here and make a?
No, I mean, but sustainability and environmental science are two of the newest areas in scouting, and they're both equally required. And troops work on projects in those areas as a troop as well as individual scouts. And we would look to have opportunity for scouts and the troop to do something productive.
Absolutely. Thank you for that comment. That was worth breaking in. All right. That's excellent. And Mr. Hardy is a great source for your troop. All right. All right. Thank you for keeping me in line here, clerks and staff. And now, I would like to move on to the consent calendar. I'm a little out of practice, out of rhythm, but I'll catch up soon. All right. We have no staff briefing tonight. We do have, onto item 10, our consent calendar. Is there any member of my council wishing to pull an item for further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull 10.3 for some clarifying questions.
Okay, 10.3.
Brief.
Brief. Brief, but spectacular. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Be sure to visit that little basket by the door.
That's right.
Not gluten-free, not nut-free, but chocolatey. All right, have a good night. Thank you for visiting us. All right, we're going to pull 10.3. I just would like to briefly pull 10.2, just ask one question on that one. So we'll, those two items will be pulled. I don't see anyone else wishing to pull, as far as I can tell. I'll look for a motion now to adopt the consent calendar 10.1 and 10.4.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent calendar 10.1 and 10.4.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to adopt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any pos? See none. That motion passes unanimously. Let's go to 10.2 quickly. There's somebody there on that one. That is, let's see, this Cornell Pump Station. Anybody here to briefly, Mr. Traverso, I don't need to have a staff report. The question I have is whether the system as built is actually working to reduce what has been described as, well, I can't say that publicly, but bad odors, we'll put it that way. I guess a fundamental question, that's the bane of my existence, it's been that way for my 50 years on the council. And so, I just want to, I'm joking, but you know, that's a fundamental, there's obviously a lot of other concerns in terms of moving the affluent to where it needs to go, but in terms of the smell that is predominant out there, it's been that way for many years. Do you get a sense that that has been resolved? That's my question there.
Thank you. Mario Traverso, project manager with Public Works. I've been frequenting the site since the construction's complete. We did install two odor control devices, charcoal filter ventilation devices, and then we did seal the hatch. So before, it was basically an open pit, four or five-foot-wide hole that was just exposed and leaching out into the air. So we did substantial modifications to the structure to address the smell. I think it's been successful. I recently talked to Anthony McKelly, who lives down there. We kind of did a walk-around sniffing test. There is some new challenges with the construction. We're getting a lot of grease buildup. We're getting a lot of grease buildup, presumably from a local restaurant that we're having to deal with now. But the station's functioning. The goal was to create a system that was going to work for the next 20 years without any involvement from staff on a major part, and we're almost there, so.
All right. Thank you for that update. I appreciate that. It sounds like good news. Yeah, we have to keep after the grease buildup. That obviously could be a problem for our system. All right, thank you. Mr. Barrett, did you have a question regarding the other one? And we'll get some information from Mr. Traverso on that. Question, please.
Thank you. Mr. Traverso, thanks for being here. And thanks for your work. We hear good things about you on the street, so thank you. I have a question around, specifically on 10.3, around the alternate bid one. I was, it could be me, and I apologize in advance if it was, I couldn't really thread alternate bid one outside of the ask for the 25% contingency, which is, in general, that caught my eye because it's high. You did address that in your staff report, but I couldn't trace that bid one to anything that I could grab onto, so I'm not sure what it is. Can you explain that?
Absolutely. So this is a very complicated project. This storm drain is connecting to Caltrans facilities in Main Street, so there's a coordination there. And then this pipeline will be crossing Oak through the PG&E lot and through a private parcel adjacent to the PG&E lot, ultimately dumping into Sulfur Creek. So I've had to negotiate and coordinate and work with both PG&E and the private lot owner regarding this pipe installation. And basically, part of the negotiations for the installation was for the private property owner to self-install the pipe. And so while we're open to that idea and we're working through those negotiations right now, we couldn't, at this point, we can't rely on that working out 100%. And so we solicited that portion as a bid alternate, in effect, to get pricing of what that would cost to keep our options open for that pipeline installation.
Thank you. That's helpful. Is it possible, before we vote on this, to separate the contingency amount instead of a flat 25% that theoretically could go anywhere, even if bid alternate one wasn't needed? It still would authorize a 25% contingency? I'm not saying you guys would do that, but just to keep it clean, go with a 10% overall project contingency and then the remainder, the 15% if alternate bid one is in fact needed?
Yes, I would probably request a 15% contingency. We, you know, we have a very thorough plan, but there is probably a lot of situations that we're going to encounter, just due to the age of the system, you know, the PG&E facilities in Oak Street, just there's a lot of potential for complications. I would request a 15% contingency to deal with that.
Okay.
As far as, as far as the, as it relates to the second portion of the pipe, we are working with the property owner, and I do hope to have that buttoned up and come back to council with an agreement that funds that second portion. We're just not there yet. And, I'm not sure if I answered your question.
I think you did. So it sounds like you're going to be coming back regardless for if we need bid, an alternate bid one?
Yes, so, yeah.
Okay. I did notice, and just a comment, I did notice the spread of the bids. The average bid was over, I think around three and a half, maybe even more, million, and we took, of course, the lowest bid at 2.8. But the spread tend to, very strongly indicated that it was higher than that, even up to five-plus million.
Yep.
How confident are you and your colleagues that, you know, that's not just a, you know, the bids are going to escalate because they underbidded? And we'll be coming back, we'll be seeing a lot of you here for this.
So the, I personally, I feel the pricing that we got, the low bid, was fair. And it was a very competitive actual cost versus, you know, a premium cost that was reflected in the higher bids. The contractors are slow right now. They are, this is a weird project in that it's happening in the wintertime, but it was a perfect opportunity for a really aggressive bid. And I do believe we got that. The pricing did not look, there was nothing suspect about low pricings or low bid items in the bids. In fact, I did feel that the bid alternate that they provided was elevated, and so I think that the tactic was that they would make up some of their profit in the bid alternate award. But aside from that, I mean, Argonauts, we've worked with Argonaut a lot in the city, the foreman, we've worked with them closely, they have a really great team. And with this contractor, with the pricing, I don't foresee a lot of back and forth, but I do, it is going to be a complicated project.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. If there are not any other questions, anybody from the public wishing to comment on these two items, or excuse me, this item? Ms. Dizzi?
Hi, thank you for being here. Since it was brought up and we're here, I had one comment or question that I often think of when these come before us, and I've often wondered if we track the initial cost and the contingency and how much is spent over time. It would probably be fascinating. I'm guessing we would, it would be interesting to know, maybe certain contractors come within and some go, obviously, it depends by project, but I just want to comment that I've always wondered what those numbers look like, and if we, I don't know if we have that data and we consider it when we're looking at what the contingency is.
Absolutely. So we do a reconciliation of the project at the notice of completion. So, for example, we're doing the notice of completion for Cornell right now. I think we were, overall, we were about 50,000 we spent of contingency on a $1.25 million job. So, and our projects, we don't have a track record of going.
Data would be.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
That was just a quick comment. Thank you.
All right.
I'll make a motion to adopt 10.3 with the modification for a 15% contingency, not including the alternate bid one, which would come back if it was deemed necessary.
All right, there's motion on the floor.
I'll second the motion.
The second on the motion.
Mayor, can I just make, since we do have a resolution for this, so encompassed in that, we're approving the resolution, and I think that calls out the 15% contingency specifically, or the 25%, so we'll change that in the resolution to 15%. And then the other part of it, I think, is just an acknowledgement that it's coming back, so we aren't going to add language to the resolutions. Does that make sense?
Sure. Thanks.
All right, there's a motion on the second with the minor amendments as elucidated by Mr. Barrett and Mr. Walsh. Roll call, please, on 10.8. Is it three? Yeah, thank you. 10.3.
Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Spaderato.
Yes.
Councilmember Barak.
Yes.
And Councilmember Summers.
Yes.
All right, and now I'll look for motion on item 10.2.
I'll make the motion to approve item 10.2 of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion of the second to approve 10.2. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor Doring.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dizzi.
Yes.
Councilmember Spaderato.
Yes.
Councilmember Barrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Summers.
Yes.
Yes, all right, there we go. We completed it all. Let's see. By the way, I just wanted to comment that we've had a lot of work with Argonaut, and Argonaut has turned out to be quite an extraordinary contractor for us, a lot of history. There are, I guess, things I know about where they made particular accommodations for property owners in different areas that were not within the scope of their work to help out, and that's been, as you said, we have worked with the foreman, and there's a lot of good history there, so, but you've raised a good point, and I think we've addressed that satisfactorily. Okay, no public hearings tonight. There's no old business. As we had stated before, the new business, the 13.1, has been removed from the calendar, so we are on to item 14. Are there any reports by any of my colleagues? Doesn't look like it. Does this mean that the mayor can call? Oh, I have to explain that, I know there was something that staff told me to point out. It says, "The next regular city council meeting, November 11th, was canceled at the beginning of the year when we adopted our calendar due to the Veterans Day holiday. It'll be a special meeting on November 18th. That will be the only council meeting in November." So I wanted to point that out. All right. Before I adjourn, I would just want to make sure that our community has a happy Halloween. I always like to caution folks to be careful with children and animals, be safe, be smart, find joy in candy, pumpkins, witches, and all that scary stuff out there. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you so much.